I kind of was thinking that.
We call the meeting to order for legislative session 2019-01. That's because it's the 2nd of January 2019. Those that would like to stand and join us for the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
At five.
At my head.
I will be with you on earth, as is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we give your love and trust us against us. And we do not want to do things but deliver things to you. Thy name is the kingdom, and thy power and glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the legislative minutes from December 18th, 2018. Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the work session minutes from December 4th, 2018?
So moved.
Second? Any corrections, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the work session minutes from December 18th, 2018?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the work session minutes from December 4th, 2018?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Any corrections, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the work session minutes from December 18th, 2018?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, minutes are approved. Entertained a motion to approve the work session minutes from December 18th, 2018?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, minutes are approved. At this time, we'd like to present, we'll be presenting at the podium, a proclamation for Mr. Michael Pennington in recognition of his retirement. Michael, I'll meet you over there. Come on over to the side. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you? And happy new year to you.
Pleasure to have you here.
Thanks.
You know, Michael, for many years now, when I first got on the council in 2006, my first job was all of a sudden to be appointed the chairman of the Tri-County Council. And I had no idea what the Tri-County Council was at the time, because I was brand-new to it all. And it didn't take long for me to figure out the great work that the Tri-County Council was doing, and what an excellent leader that the Tri-County Council had for the three-county area with Mike Pennington. And he helped me greatly through all the processes that I needed to know as far as what Wycomico's role was in that. And firsthand, I had the opportunity to witness just exactly what you've done. And it's, you've had a great career, Michael.
Thank you.
And we are certainly going to miss you. But before you go, I read a proclamation to thank you, okay? And I, you know what I meant to do, I'm not kidding. We had a present, small presentation at the Tri-County about two or three weeks ago, and Michael was giving away his ties because he's not going to be, his wife says he's not going to be wearing ties anymore. And I grabbed one of the ties, and I had it separate from all my ties this morning to wear today, but I apologize, because I forgot to put it on.
That's all right.
It's a nice one.
Yeah.
From a museum, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's... The proclamation reads as such: Whereas Mike Pennington began his career with Tri-County Council in January 2002 as the first executive director of the newly-created organization; and whereas during his tenure with the Tri-County Council, Mr. Pennington oversaw the transition of Shore Transit and the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance, becoming divisions of the Tri-County Council in 2004 and in 2009, worked to achieve the designation of an Economic Development District for the region. And whereas, under Mr. Pennington's leadership, the Tri-County Council grew from two employees to over 160 employees, and grew from an annual budget of $250,000 to over $15 million. And whereas, working with other regional councils, Mr. Pennington helped create the Eastern Shore Regional GIS Center in 2004, the Maryland Broadband Cooperative in 2006, and initiated the Tri-County Council creating a regional revolving loan fund in 2017. Now therefore, after a successful 17-year career with the Tri-County Council, the Wycomico County Council celebrates and honors Mike Pennington for his many years of dedicated service to the citizens of the Tri-County region, and wishes him a happy, healthy, and restful retirement, done this second day of January in 2019. There you go.
And everybody's time here is precious, so I won't take up very much time, but I did want to just thank you all very much for this honor. I do appreciate it. And I do want to just say that the Tri-County Council membership is made up of all the elected officials in Worcester-Wycomico and Somerset County. And without their guidance and leadership, we couldn't have accomplished any of the activities that we've done. So I do greatly appreciate your support. I hope for your continued support of the Tri-County Council. Mr. Greg Padham is the new director there. I know he's met several of you already, and I know he'll be looking forward to your support. And I think we'll have another new chair for the Tri-County Council coming from Wycomico County in a couple of days at the AMACO meeting. So again, appreciate all your help and support, and thanks.
Thank you very much, Michael.
And... Thank you, Mike. You gonna be there tomorrow?
No.
No more times. Good morning, Ms. Hurley.
Good morning, Council President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. You'll notice we have several boards and commission appointments on the agenda this morning. Agenda items number 1 through 16 are appointments of council members to various boards and commissions, starting with Resolution Number 01, 2019, appointing John T. Cannon as a voting member of the Tri-County Council for the Lower Shore of Maryland.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 01, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 02, 2019, confirming the reappointment of John T. Cannon to the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 02, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 03, 2019, confirming the reappointment of John T. Cannon to the Salisbury-Wycomico Economic Development SWED Revolving Loan Committee.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 03, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 04, 2019, confirming the appointment of John T. Cannon to the Wycomico County Airport Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 04, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 05, 2019, confirming the reappointment of Joe Holloway to the Salisbury-Wycomico Economic Development SWED Board of Directors.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 05, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 06, 2019, confirming the reappointment of Joe Holloway to the Commission on Aging.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 06, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 07, 2019, confirming the appointment of Joe Holloway as a designated Director of PAC-14 Incorporated.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 07, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 08, 2019, appointing Larry W. Dodd as a voting member of the Tri-County Council for the Lower Shore of Maryland.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 08, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 09, 2019, confirming the reappointment of Larry W. Dodd to Wycomico County Recreation and Parks Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 09, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 10, 2019, confirming the appointment of Larry W. Dodd to Wycomico County Tourism and Civic Center Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 10, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 11, 2019, appointing Josh Hastings as a voting member of the Tri-County Council for the Lower Shore of Maryland.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 11, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Resolution Number 12, 2019, confirming the appointment of Josh Hastings to the Salisbury-Wycomico Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 12, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 13, 2019, confirming the appointment of Josh Hastings to the Delmarva Resource and Development Council.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 13, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 14, 2019, confirming the appointment of Josh Hastings to Shore Up Incorporated.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 14, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 15, 2019, appointing William R. McCain as a voting member of the Tri-County Council for the Lower Shore of Maryland.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 15, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 16, 2019, confirming the appointment of William R. McCain to the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 16, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Okay, the next item for business is Resolution Number 17, 2019, approving a transfer between major categories of Wycomico County Board of Education operating budget from fiscal year 2018-2019, transferring a total of $265,000. And we have Mr. Bruce Ford here, CPA, Chief Finance and Operations Officer with the Wycomico County Board of Education.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 17, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Would you like to come up? I know you have guests here, whoever you'd like to bring with you. If you could each state your name and position for the, for the public, that would be great. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Cannon, fellow council members. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Bruce Ford. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer for the Board of Education.
Good morning and happy new year to everyone. I'm Bonnie Wallston. I'm the Director of Special Education, birth through 21.
Good morning, Jesse Reed, Controller, Wycomico County Board of Education.
Good morning, everyone. Kim Miles, Assistant Superintendent for Student and Family Services.
Good morning. Thank you all for being here. Happy new year.
Thank you. As we had briefed the council at the last board council work session, we are coming forward this morning with a request for a transfer. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Reed to review that transfer with you in detail, and Ms. Miles and Ms. Wallston be able to answer any specific questions that you may have. And I want to thank Mr. Culver for forwarding this to you with his approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Thank you guys for the opportunity for being here today. The transfer request before you is for $265,000. It's necessary due to three students new to Wycomico County this year with severe medical needs that require one-on-one nurses. We did not anticipate these costs in the FY '18 budget, and are consequently projecting a budget deficit in the category of student health services. Fortunately, we are projecting budget availability in the categories Other Instructional Costs and Special Education, so we have funds available to transfer to cover the nursing deficit, and we stand ready to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions? I think we touched on some of this before, and this is for three students. Is this sort of, if there were four students, would be, would it be an additional amount equal to what we're doing today? Or is this some type of, I know it's for individual contractual one-on-one nurses, because we have that information, just for the public's information, as far as how does it break down with a total of $265,000? Are some of those base costs, or if it was an additional student, would be another $100,000? Because it seems like it's about 80,000 per student.
Correct. It's actually for about 80,000 per student, and the fourth student we're expecting to be coming on sometime this month, so the additional money is for that potential fourth student. We wanted to be, you know, safe rather than not budget for it. Okay?
This is extraordinary, Mr. Cannon and council members, in light of the fact of the medical conditions of these students requiring the higher level of skilled nursing, of at least a registered nurse, to be with them at all times because of their presenting medical condition. Unfortunately, we cannot predict who's going to be moving into our county, nor the disabilities that they're going to be presenting with, but we are obligated under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, as well as the American Disabilities Act of 1973, that says that we have to provide that level of support in order for them to be able to access their general education curriculum and participate as any other non-disabled student would have the opportunity to do.
Are there any additional funds that maybe the federal government or the state matches for these families? Or is the, is the burden on the local government?
On the local government for, for the education cost. I know that there are other supports that are for families outside of the school day, but they do not support the school. Education is their right from age 5 through 21 if they are a student with a disability.
Okay.
If they come from another school district, is that school district required to forward any funding to Wycomico?
No, sir.
Just a thought.
No, sir. Just as we leave us and go to another county, we are not under that obligation as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 17, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes. Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Keep up the good work.
Watch out.
The next item for consideration is Resolution Number 18, 2019, approving bylaws for the Wycomico Partnership for Families and Children. The last update to the bylaws was done in 2017, and it's my understanding that the version before you today is a complete rewrite of that version. And we do have Michelle Bradley here, Director of the Wycomico Partnership for Families and Children.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 18, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
A discussion. Ms. Bradley, did you want to come up and explain any particulars here? Question might just be overall, what is changing as a whole for operations?
Overall, the operations aren't necessarily changing, but there was a lot that was included in the previous bylaws that are already accounted for in the charter and as well as in our procedural manual. So it was really duplication, so we took it out. And there was one position on the board that mandated for us to have a treasurer. Well, that's in direct conflict with the county charter, because the county is responsible for our finances, and our board is all volunteer. So to leave that responsibility on a volunteer member with the budgets and the numbers that we work with didn't seem very reasonable, so we eliminated the treasurer position.
Okay. Any questions from anyone? We have heard, I have anyway, heard that you're doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
Yeah, unsolicited, and from two different positions of people who had said, yeah, everything's in order, and that you, you're gone, you have gone miles beyond even what the expectations were originally, so that's...
Well, thank you. That's nice to hear. We're trying to streamline and get everything in working order.
Very good. Any other questions from anyone? No? All those in favor of Resolution 18, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Resolution Number 19, 2019, authorizing Exxon Enterprises Incorporated as a sole-source vendor for the purchase of tasers and body cameras, and to waive the formal competitive bidding process for the purchase of said tasers and body cameras during fiscal year 2019. Council may recall that Exxon Enterprises was authorized as a sole-source vendor in August of 2018 for the Department of Corrections to purchase tasers. This request is now coming before you from the Sheriff's Department, seeking to purchase body cameras as well as tasers. And we do have Nick Rice, purchasing agent, and Lieutenant Weersbur here.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 19, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I think a lot of times if you see a video of body cam on TV, a lot of times you'll see it inscribed in there as Exxon, so it's used across the country quite a bit, so I have faith in this.
Anybody have any questions of Mr. Rice or Lieutenant Weersbur? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 19, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next is a submission of appointments to the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee, Tourism and Civic Center Commission, and Recreation and Parks Commission. In accordance with Charter Section 315, the county executive is to submit appointments to boards and commissions to council for confirmation at a legislative session. The Director of Administration has formally submitted the names of several individuals to serve on the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee, Tourism and Civic Center Commission, as well as the Recreation and Parks Commission. Starting with the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee, this committee was established in 2009 for the purpose of developing a comprehensive GI plan with strategies to implement green infrastructure conservation in Wycomico County. Resolution Number 20, 2019, is confirming the appointment of Jared R. Parks to the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 20, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 21, 2019, confirming the appointment of Alyssa Massey to the Natural Resources Conserv, or Resources Conservation Advisory Committee.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 21, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Okay, next for consideration are several appointments to the Wycomico County Tourism and Civic Center Commission. This commission is somewhat new. Council may recall, it adopted legislation in October of 2018 to combine the Tourism Commission and the Civic Center Commission into one. The Director of Administration has submitted the names of several nominees for the initial appointments of the newly combined Tourism and Civic Center Commission. Starting with Resolution Number 22, 2019, is confirming the appointment of Sandra S. Fitzgerald Angelo to the Wycomico County Tourism and Civic Center Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 22, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 23, 2019, confirming the appointment of Kathleen G. McLean to the Wycomico County Tourism and Civic Center Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 23, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, I'm a discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 24, 2019, confirming the appointment of Laura Soper to the Wycomico County Tourism and Civic Center Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 24, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, resolution passes.
Resolution Number 25, 2019, confirming the appointment of Michael E. Getze to the Wycomico County Tourism and Civic Center Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 25, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next is Resolution Number 26, 2019, confirming the appointment of Stephanie Willey to the Wycomico County Tourism and Civic Center Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 26, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Resolution Number 27, 2019, confirming the appointment of William R. Chambers to the Wycomico County Tourism and Civic Center Commission.
Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 27, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number twenty eight two thousand and nineteen, confirming the appointment of Michael B. Delano to the Waukesha County Tourism and Civic Center Commission.
Entertained motion approved, resolution twenty eight two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Resolution number twenty nine two thousand and nineteen, confirming the appointment of Edward W. Urban to Waukesha County Tourism and Civic Center Commission.
Entertained motion to approve, resolution twenty nine two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Seen on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is resolution number thirty two thousand and nineteen, confirming the appointment of Bakula Sh Patel to the Waukesha County Tourism and Civic Center Commission.
Entertained motion approved, resolution thirty two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seen on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
The last appointment for your consideration today is the, is to the Recreation and Parks Commission. This commission acts in an advisory capacity to the Director of Recreation, Parks and Tourism on all matters concerning comprehensive planning, policy interpretation, budgeting, operation, maintenance, capital improvements, as well as the formulation of plans and policies for public recreation, the establishment of recreation programs, and the creation of recreation policies. Resolution number thirty one two thousand and nineteen is confirming the appointment of Chair Michael Mitchell to the Waukesha County Recreation and Parks Commission.
Entertained motion to approve, resolution thirty one two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Seen on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, you can come to the podium, please state your name and your county of residence and your concerns. Right, yes, there, that would be great, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Dr. Jerry Mason, and I'm a resident of Salisbury, Maryland, five five four six, Don Beech Court in Salisbury, and I'm also a Realtor with ERA Martin. I'm here because my sister is a patient at Waukesha County Nursing Home in Salisbury, and I am asking the council to please reconsider any privatization of the nursing home, and we're looking at working together as a community to come up with a proposal or some plan that we can keep it in the public sector, as it was established by the community on the west side, as a place where residents could keep their patients there at a low cost and also support that. I don't know if all of you know that, but by doubt the Capitol Sorority, which most of the members attended my church, which was Wesley Temple, they started that with Agatha Polk being in charge, the leader, and it has been existing this year for fifty-two years. And I'm proud of the accomplishments and the support from the community thus far, but if you don't know something, if things are hidden from you, or people just don't let you know that we're in trouble budget-wise, then there's nothing that the community can do. But now that it has been brought to our attention, we need to meet together with the community leaders, the churches, and everyone who has interests and has relatives, their family members, in that nursing home, to see what we can do to resolve this matter before, I know you put a June deadline on when you would make the final decision, but I'm here to really say that there are a lot of people in the community who look at Waukesha County Nurse, Waukesha Nursing Home as one of the best nursing homes in this area. It has been in the Metropolitan Magazine as the number one choice for nursing homes. So if you look at the other nursing home and you visit them and you wonder why, they are private, private nursing homes, and Waukesha Nursing Home is public, so that should tell you something that, yes, we might need updating and repairs, but with what they have, they have kept that nursing home at a rating of one. You go on to the site and look up nursing homes in Waukesha County, and you see that Waukesha Nursing Home has four stars, and the other nursing homes don't. So that speaks for itself. By privatizing the nursing home, all we are doing is shifting the responsibility of the repairs and the updating to a private company, a company who is looking at their bottom line. And at any time, they're looking at the money they're gonna make off the nursing home, not really doing anything significant to improve the situation, but just how much money they can make off the patients. And I feel that Waukesha County should stay in the forefront of this, do everything they can, I mean, if we have to start a GoFundMe page, whatever to do, we can do to keep it in the hands of the county. And yes, I've been there when the heat didn't work, the air conditioning didn't work, and I've seen Mr. Culver there, working with the staff, trying to resolve problems, but we don't just throw our hands up and say, oh, you know, this is nothing we can do. There is something we can do, and it's a vital part of the community, and I beg you that you meet with community members and board members and elected officials, get together on a consensus on how we can resolve this problem before it's too late. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. To, I always give thanks to God for the opportunity to be here, to President Cannon and, and council members, again, good morning. My name is Mary Ashanti, and I'm president of Waukesha County NAACP. I'm here to let you know that Waukesha County NAACP supports everything that Dr. Mason has said, and so not only is she representing herself, there are other church, churches that feel the same way. I jotted myself a question, because I really didn't know, is there an advisory commission to Waukesha Nursing Home? And if there is, I'm not expecting you to tell me that right now, if there is, what is the, what's the composition of that committee and what, and what their function is? And I hear Dr. Mason said that you all have to make a decision by June. Let that be a decision that you make because you're well informed as to what the community want, what we can do. I think that, that working together, we can resolve that issue, whether it's finance, whatever, I think that we can resolve it working together, and thank you, and have a great New Year.
Thank you, President Shaw. Any other public comments?
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Carol Ward, I was up here a couple of weeks ago when I talked to you all. I have gotten contact with four of the seven council members, and I do feel a little bit more comfortable about the situation, and I got to talk to some of you this morning. Waukesha Nursing Home is a vital part of this, of this community. We don't want to see it sold, we don't want to see it closed. The building, yeah, it needs updates, that doesn't matter. What matters is, like, Keisha, nurse, sitting over there, these people have the heart of gold, they're there for the patients, they take care of the patients. I've been to other nursing homes, I mean, I've worked on ambulances before, my husband is a paramedic, we've seen what other patients had to go through. When my grandmother was in another nursing home, I had to take pictures every single day of the debt that she got. I had to go to Andy Harris's office, file a complaint, they got fined forty thousand dollars at that other nursing home. Since my grandmother's been in Waukesha, she has got excellent care. Please do whatever you can to save it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seen on council comments.
Just a quick comment.
Yes.
And in the, we did several appointments here today, and just want to thank all those individuals for their willingness to serve our community and serve on those different committees and commissions.
Thank you, Council McCain. Any other council comments?
I too wanted to comment on that long list of appointments. A lot of people don't realize that we have quite a few committees and commissions, and it's really difficult at times to get somebody to serve on that, because you're taking time away from your family, and some of these appointees today have served on several different committees, and I thank them for stepping up to the plate, and all the new members, I thank them as well.
Any other comments?
On the presidential comments, I noticed the same thing, Councilman McCain, that some of those names were on there in two thousand and six, Ed Urban and a few others, and it's really nice to see people in the community who are so effective in the community, taking a part and actually working with, with the county on many commissions that are so important to the county as a whole, and they are doing great work, and for the new individuals that have signed on, we do appreciate their support. With what has been talked and discussed in the public comments on the nursing home, the council is very much aware of the, of the community's concerns on the nursing home, and we want to make sure that we do tread very lightly as we review this. It's been said in the past that, you know, well, you know, all of a sudden, you know, you come out with this, and, you know, where, why haven't we discussed these problems before, and the fact that there's a funding issue, and, you know, why all of a sudden at the last minute, is it's almost so urgent that you're saying that we need to close it or to get someone else, have someone else take over the management or the ownership of it? What we found out happens in the public arena so often is that if we bring out publicly what some of the concerns are, we immediately have to be worried about what the ramifications might be, and that's why I think it came to, to such a head at this point in time, that, okay, there's an issue with, with funding sources and with the budgeting for the nursing home, because as soon as we have to do that publicly, then all of a sudden, as people will test, you know, the testimony that I've heard, everyone is concerned about losing their jobs, losing their, their tenancy at the nursing home, and that's a concern that we do have. So we don't really try to make a secret of any of it, we, you know, it's, I mean, if it were public, if it were privately owned, you wouldn't know anything about it, because the Board of Directors meet, and they meet in, in private, and they review what the circumstances might be, and then when it's the appropriate time, they'll announce what they'll, you know, what actions will be taken. We try to avoid discussing it in full detail until it's absolutely necessary, not because we want to hide any of the facts and figures, it's just simply to avoid any type of a panic in the community as to what may be happening. That being said, we do recognize the fact that there are concerns financially with the nursing home, we do recognize that. I guess the question's going to be if there's a method that we can take to, to stop the excessive losses and to bring that under control, whether that's even within the ability for the county as, as, as a body to, to do that. And I guess the second part of that, which is what we've been talking about at prior work sessions, is that if we find out that we do have to bring a management group in to, to manage the nursing home, that we, what is of paramount interest to the executive and to this council is that there is no compromise of services to this nursing home. If we sell, if it were to be that the nursing home were sold to a private company, we would want to try to make sure that those same assurances are, are maintained. Granted, you can't always do that. Once the property is sold, once a new company comes in, they will most likely have the, the flexibility to do whatever they feel necessary to make it a profitable organization. So we're, we're very carefully trying to weigh that, we're trying to, you know, balance out what the pros and cons might be and what the true sustainability is to the taxpayers of Waukesha County. So we, we do appreciate everybody that's coming here, because every time someone comes to the podium and explains their concerns, I think it does shed a new light as far as what some of the, the issues really are on a personal level, and that is important to the, to the members of the council here. So we'll continue to review it, I know that Mr. Strasburg has been working very, very hard with different organizations, different companies, to make sure that however we may transition, you know, and within the next year, that it will be to the best benefit of Waukesha County and to the individuals working there and the individuals who are currently residing there. That being said, yes, Joe?
I guess I would like to ask how many people on the council have visited the nursing home in the past couple of years? Anybody been out there?
Been there.
I think what we need to do is to set up a tour where we can all go out there at one time, or four at a time, and three at one other time, so we don't have a conflict there, and take a tour of the nursing home and see what's going on, so we can, you know, have a better idea of what some of the concerns are.
Okay.
Okay?
And maybe we would let, let the staff know, let the director know, and let the staff know in case any of the staff wants to talk one-on-one while we're there, it's a great opportunity.
All right.
Okay, all right, great, thank you, thank you, Joe. Yes, ma'am. You would have to go to the podium, because we need a microphone for, for PAC fourteen. We don't have handhelds just yet.
My question is, I understand that Waukesha County took over the nursing home because the sorority couldn't continue to fund it, and we appreciate that. But I also say we should communicate, especially with the community at large, who started that facility, as to what is going on and what is happening, because they had an initial investment. And I am asking this question as Murray did, is there an advisory board that operates, or is just this council?
I, it's, it's just this council, there's no advisory board. I'm not quite sure as far as the structure within the nursing home, now Wayne is saying that there's no advisory board specifically, I know we don't make any appointments as an advisory board or a commission.
That, that was suggested at one of our prior council meetings, that possibly, like, we have an advisory board for the, for the airport or the library and such, that there'd be an advisory, advisory board put together, but I don't think that's happened yet, right, Wayne? It's not, I don't know if it's been considered or not by the executive's office.
There are too many regulatory issues that we have to go through in the next thirty days to, to be dealing with that.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. My background, I served as Somerset County Extension Director for twenty-two years, prior to my going into real estate, and I managed the budget and I managed that office, and gave an accolade for being one of the best directors that they ever had in Somerset County, and I worked with the county council. So I am saying that I will give my expertise and my knowledge, I have been to several trainings on public policy, and I would be glad to work with you so we can get this resolved, so you can put my name down as one of the community leaders who's willing to work with you.
If you would give your information to Mrs. Hurley, that would be a big help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Seen on entertained motion adjourned, so we can go an open work session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First item on the open work session agenda is the airport capital improvement program and budget. I know I see Mrs. Don Beech somewhere out there. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Happy New Year.
It's only ten forty-five.
So Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration.
Tom Beech, Airport Manager.
Wayne Strasburg, Director of Administration.
Guess what we'll do is we'll, you know, if you'd like to just review what we know that we're looking at as far as the capital improvements at the airport and what you find is priorities there.
Okay.
Okay?
And I'll just walk through them as they're published, if that's okay?
That would be great.
They would follow your document.
That would be great.
And the first project is the old terminal building and rehab for not only the roof and roof redesign because of the leakage, but also to give it a new facelift and let it be a little bit more on the same motif that we're doing out there right now with the coastal design. That building needs some major infrastructure repairs and so forth besides the roof as well. The design is in twenty twenty, is what we've requested funding for, and then the air traffic radios that are listed as the equipment in here are also being funded in twenty twenty-two. Those radio equipments are to relocate those on the second floor. Piedmont Airlines would like to expand to the second floor, they're on the first floor. When the flight service station, if you recall, moved out many years ago, they left a small cadre of FAA people and their electronic equipment up there, and it's, they don't need that much space, and we'd like to relocate them, and I have another line item for that project as well. The second one is the parking lot rehab for rental car and for the employees' lot. Those all need overlay and resurfacing, we've got potholes and wear and tear. Unfortunately, FAA and MAA will not pay for parking lots, so it ends up coming out of the general fund. The next item is a storage unit for rental cars as well as us. We have a current four-bay storage unit behind the baggage area that we have now. We need to provide some storage for our rental cars, so we propose to take the existing floor plans from the previous one, the five thousand dollars is just for site prep, a site survey, and get it ready, because we have construction plans from the other building, we just built the exact same building in a different location, have access for the rental cars, so they have a place to put their vacuum cleaners, trash cans, so that we don't have trash blowing all out there, they have a place to secure it, and then also other equipment that they use to clean their vehicles. And this also can go into their rent fees, so it would be reimbursed. Next one is the runway fourteen three-two extension. This project started back in seventeen and eighteen with the master plan update. Master plan is currently being in the process of approved, it should be approved in thirty days, less than thirty days, they have our final comments. In twenty twenty, we're looking at the environmental assessment as well as the part of the runway design project, that project will be done in two phases, so the first phase is done in twenty twenty, the second phase is done in twenty twenty-one, and the costs are there. The land acquisition is five hundred thousand in twenty twenty, and then in twenty twenty-one it's three point one million. Not all of this is for just the runway extension, some of this is catch-up from the past years where it was put in the budget and not funded, and FAA is holding our feet to the fire now to, to do those acquisitions that should have been done many years ago to clean up penetrations and runway protection zones where we're supposed to own the property and control it. So that's what some of that is, it's a combination. And then the final year in twenty twenty-two is the actual funding for the runway extension to build that, and this is all being done under reimbursements from FAA, ninety percent FAA, five percent MAA, and five percent from the county.
So, so on that, so we have a million this year, four million next year out of Pago, and then the feds and everybody kicks in on the third year, but...
And it, it's all reimbursable. We're forward funding.
Basically forward funding, Mark.
So that four million and one million this year, we can...
It'll come back to us.
Okay, all right.
And the reason for forward funding is because if we wait until they fund it in twenty twenty-two, we'll never get it built until twenty twenty-four, maybe twenty twenty-five. This will speed up our process for Piedmont's issue of being restricted in the summer and also the growth that we need to, to be able to build other facilities. The next one is rehab access control system. Our current system is a, is comprised of the fencing plus electronic gates that are done with a, just a card and combination, it doesn't meet FAA or TSA regulatory requirements any longer, and if we increase our index with another carrier in here for a level of security that's required, we'll have to have photo ID type recognition systems like the County Corrections Center does. So we have a proposal in with the MAA to help fund that, but we've put it all in Pago in case they don't fund it for us, because we do have to replace that next year. Part of it is broken down in construction and the other is for the actual equipment. And by the way, it goes down all the time, so we're always struggling with it, so our maintenance bills will go away out of our ops budget, hopefully. The next one is the main terminal building mechanical for the HVAC, prior to my... Prior to my arrival, there was a replace-in-kind bid put out to replace the HVAC system in the main terminal building. The existing system didn't work properly, so I'm not sure why a replace-in-kind was done instead of a redesign. It's going to cost seventy-seven thousand dollars now to go back and redesign the new system so it'll function properly. It's been up, in the operating the two years I've been here, and it hasn't worked correctly yet. We're spending a lot of maintenance bills, callouts, to get them to come out and have to reset same things, so we think it's prudent to go through and modify the system so we don't have horrific maintenance bills every year and get it corrected so it functions properly. I will request this year in January with MAA for any excess funds that they have this year that they might fund that.
Okay.
Air traffic control tower rehab, electronic equipment. Our proposal with the rehab of the old terminal is to relocate FAA out of the second floor. That design is going to be seventy thousand this year to look at moving the equipment as well as a design to put at the base of the tower, like a lean-to, a set of office space around the bottom of the base. That way they can run their electronic equipment, cabling directly up to the roof if that's where they end up putting their antennas, and it'll be where it should be. We can build that as a secure place with waterproofing and things. They're not in a proper facility anyway on the second floor. It's all glass windows and leaking roof at this time, so we can get them in a better environment as well. Unfortunately, this is a non-federal tower. We contract that, so it becomes our responsibility, not FAA's.
Point of clarification for the public, we've now entered, the projects we're talking about now are so-called enterprise projects that aren't supported by the general fund. They're supported by either the MAA or the FAA.
Do we have, do we have any enterprise reserves, the airport reserve?
We do. We do.
About what are they?
Off the top of my head, Joe, I, I can't tell you, but I can get that for you now. Some of those reserve funds have been committed, but I can get your breakdown of that.
Are they separated in operating and capital, those reserve funds, or they're just two different?
The reserve funds are principally, Joe, for capital projects.
If we're putting the amount that we are into the airport, why do we maintain it as an enterprise fund?
Well, that becomes an accounting question, and that, that's better, I think that's better answered by, by either Mike Kleger or Ashley Stern. You, you would reclassify it as a special governmental fund if, from an accounting standpoint, you determined that to continue to operate it in an appropriate fashion, it would routinely rely upon general fund subsidy, much like the Civic Center, then you would reclassify it as a special governmental fund where part of the funding is coming from either state, federal, or other grant sources, and part of the funding comes from the county's general fund. One of the things that I would like to do, we, we visited the county administrators, the state county administrators have an annual workshop, if you will, and we had it this year at St. Mary's County, and we had it at their airport, and I would really like to arrange a trip where council members could visit that airport because, quite frankly, I got there and what I saw were the things that we are planning to do at our port, at our airport already well underway and were done, and I think it would really help if you can visualize what we're planning to do here and see it. Interestingly enough, the, I asked the question when I was at the St. Mary's County Airport as to how it was funded, and it's totally supported by the general fund in terms of operating and capital. Now, they still seek federal and state funding, you know, grant funding, but, but they see their airport as a critical economic generator. They've got Pax River down there, so they're very closely aligned with Pax River, but they see it as an economic generator, and it's very, very substantially funded by the general fund, so it's...
Substantially funded by the general fund, right.
Yeah.
I guess the question would be also, are they seeing, are they seeing revenue, a great, I'm assuming they're seeing an excellent revenue stream that makes it a profitable investment from the general, to put it in the general fund?
We had the opportunity to, to sit with their CFO and, and go through that discussion, and he's, he's actually the finance advisor, if you will, for, for MAKO, and he, he's, his name's Ted Zalinski? Is that his name? I think his name's Ted Zalinski, and he's fully committed to, oh, yeah, this is, you know, this, this generates tremendous, basically income tax funding for the, for St. Mary's County. So I think it would be a really, really good trip, and to, to go back to the nursing home, I would really like to arrange some group tours of the nursing home as well, and I'll try to do that when we get back from MAKO.
Great.
But back to the airport.
It's okay.
I mean, I don't think there's any question that, that the council supports a thousand percent what the airport is doing, what Mrs. Beech brings to Wycomica County and, and the airport unquestioned. It's always seems to be a matter of semantics as to whether or not the Pago funding is supposed to be outright funding or whether it should be a loan. If it's an enterprise account, why isn't it, why aren't all these funds considered loans? Why are they just considered grants? And how is that being determined as to, because it's all awash eventually anyway. It's an investment, but...
Yeah, however we do it.
Right.
We should all be convinced that there's a return on the investment that we're making, and that's the critical issue.
Well, the reason it was considered enterprise for a long time is because the county didn't put any money in it.
Exactly.
I see why. Well, that's what I'm saying, it was self-sufficient.
Exactly.
For, for years. What's, what's going on with the drone program? I mean, a year or so ago, you were talking about maybe putting drones...
It's full speed ahead. We're actually got the RFP out. We're revising the RFP that's out to build the facility. We have several companies that are coming in right behind that with four more, three or four more hangars, and then a large possible other company that's going to follow as well. We meet with them on the fifteenth of January.
Is there anything in the capital budget pertaining to the drone program or...
Last year's.
Last year.
Yeah.
Last year it was funded, and I thank you for that, and we're getting that kicked off and started, and, and it's, it's going to go probably bigger than I ever even thought it could.
Has there been any, any conversations like with US Air or any of the general aviation people about the concerns about drones being integrated into the airport?
Yes, sir. I have a monthly hangar tenant and tenant meeting for both business and for the general aviation, and we've discussed it. UMES is working with us on that because they have the flight training school there as well, and, and it is all, it's controlled. The electronic equipment that was in the budget last year is detection for not only those equipment that's being operated in our program, but also detects ones where people are just out flying and shouldn't be. So we have that detection equipment we're putting in. We'll make it a safer environment because it's tied in with our air traffic. And the, we have published ingress, egress operations routes for the drones. They're at an altitude below four hundred feet, which the aircraft should not be at lower than four hundred feet at those, those areas where the designated flight areas are. So they're separated not only by policy procedures and, and guidance that's published out there, but we also have detection equipment to ensure that the, our guidance is being followed, and if it's not, we will deal with it and pull their ability to fly.
I've had a conversation with a, with a commercial aircraft pilot that really has concerns about drones at airports, and thinks that, they think that's probably a wrong mix.
He probably hasn't been to one of our meetings to discuss it. When we get this construction built, we will have, when it opens, we will have public, I will have a public meeting to talk about it and invite everybody, because I want them to understand the operational and the safety features we've built into this to make it a safer operation than it is right now, because you have drones flying in our airspace right now that come in every day with air traffic, and there's no policies, there's no procedures other than they have to be in contact with air traffic. Once we get our detection equipment in, we'll be able to see them, whether they're part of our program or part of what air traffic is just, so they can go look at the power lines, or they can do this over at a certain area to film something. They'll still go through us like they do now, and we'll do that, but we will still have an IP address off of them because that's how the drone talks to the operator on the ground, and once that IP address hits our detection, if they're in an area they're not supposed to be, we can actually shut them down, and we will do that.
What do you, what do you mean shut them down? Drop them out of the sky?
They won't drop them out of the sky. It will make them return to base, just like if they had a malfunction. So they'll return back to their land-based operator, their pilot, and, and they won't be able to operate until they come and get it reset.
So what happens if they happen to be in that space and between the time you say you've got to come back and they're in the wrong place at the wrong time and there's other aircraft there, I mean...
They, they, once they're on the ground, they can't take off again.
I'm talking about when they're still in the air.
They, the detection will detect it before they get into an area that they shouldn't be. They're never supposed to be above four hundred feet, okay? If they go above four hundred feet, that's an immediate violation, okay? If they get over, within too close to the approach areas of the runway surfaces, which we never approve for them to, to do that anyway, air traffic doesn't, nor do I at this time, then if they're getting outside the boundary where they were approved, as soon as they get out that, then we know, because we will be able to program each of those flight plans in.
Let's not understand that Pax River has a drone, but it's, but it's on a separate airport. It's not at the same airport they do the...
They're over at St. Mary's.
Yeah, but they use a separate area. They use a separate airport for the drones, right?
No, the drone operating airspace in St. Mary's County is at the St. Mary's County Airport.
No, I'm talking about Pax River Airport. I'm talking about...
Well, you'd never get a private drone operating...
In the military.
Authorization at a military base, but the drone operating airspace that we have in our master plan has been approved by the FAA and, and is part of the, the FAA master plan approval process.
How will the, how will the military view this as far as using airports, touch-and-goes?
They don't operate in that area. We've got a designated area where our ingress and egress routes are, and they'll be published as well. The drones that'll be using the airport will operate just as an air, that are using the runways operate no different than an airplane, and they have communications with air traffic and, and so forth.
In terms of airspace, Joe, they stay out of what's called the RPZ. It's a designated, designated operating space. Any other questions?
Okay. The next project is snow removal building. That project has been in the CIP since two thousand thirteen to get equipment, storage building to put our equipment in so it can be preheated and warmed and protected, and also so it doesn't sit out in the UV and get deteriorated. That I put in in October two thousand eighteen, the FAA had supplemental discretionary money that came in at ten billion dollars, so we put this project in. We should hear back from the FAA February, probably February now, since the government shut down. Nothing's moving right now, and, but that project will be funded under normal AIP, which is ninety-five-five percent, and that's how it's broken down. The fifty thousand under the Pago is to relocate. We put in the last year's budget relocating those two hangars that are over on the east ramp where the new large FBO is going. Those two hangars will be relocated, but we also need some ramp and infrastructure and foundations, so those are all being put in together, and that's why that fifty thousand is there for that portion, because it wouldn't be carried under the FAA reimbursement. The passenger vehicle parking lot. This parking lot was built in FY ninety-two. It has really not been resurfaced since then, to my knowledge. It needs to have a mill and replace overlay. We want to expand the parking lot while we do that, so the engineering and design is two hundred thousand dollars for that. In addition, we're going to put an automated parking attendant in so that it won't be manned any longer. We had quite a bit of personnel issues last year that brought the focus more onto going to the automated system. It'll be cheaper to operate. We will own it then, and we can do a maintenance lease to where we'll get most of the profit. Then all we do is pay a lease for them to unlock the gate if we put a gated one in when it malfunctions, if somebody loses their ticket or whatever they need. They can accommodate to get them out. It's a electronic phone system that works. Those systems have been proven for many years now at airports, and they work very well. It will also increase our revenue because we won't be paying the salaries of people to, to fund that gate, which is what our contract is right now with Republic. So they would be probably the contractor that would put our system in. We'll do an RFP, but they're already there, and they want to go electronic as well, so...
So, yeah, that's always been a bit of a sticker as to why we were paying a separate company to, just to, to deal with the parking, or we didn't have our own employees doing it. So in, in a sense, this just sort of relegates them to, I guess, a maintenance role?
A maintenance contract role, right. The infrastructure's ninety-five thousand dollars to install. The time to do that is when we do the overlay so they can leave the cabling, and it's all done during that time, the gates, we reroute how we want the traffic flow to go, and then we can put in that system. After this overlay is done and expansion, then we have a public-private partnership to put in the solar parking that will be covered parking out there. We've had it designed, and it looks beautiful. It will have three sections in it. The first section will pay a hundred percent of my electric bill, and the other two will be revenue. That will not be of any funding. It'll be a land lease for them to be able to put that in. That'll be a public-private partnership after the expansion of the parking lot. We want to get that all made uniform, and, and so it has a nice appeal, and we don't have to expand it again while we're doing the overlay and, and restructure anyway. It's just a small expansion.
Just a quick question. During that process of redoing that parking lot, what do we do about the, the parking when they're, when they start that project?
They'll do it in phases.
They can stage it so that we will still have capacity for...
Yeah. We'll relocate Piedmont's parking, because part of that parking lot is Piedmont employee parking, so we'll relocate them at that time into another place where they can park, and, and we'll just expand, you know, it'll just get moved around.
These public-part, private partnerships, have you explored who's going to be doing these? I know you talked about it for the hangars and other, other portions.
Typically, it's a land lease is, is the public part, and then the private partnership is the public, is our land lease. They lease the land from us and pay us a rent, and then they get investors to build it, and then the third person is the operator.
Have you been in contact with people that do all that?
I've interviewed three solar companies. There's a huge tax advantage, which is why we don't want to pay for that infrastructure because the county can't take that tax advantage, whereas they pay almost fifty percent of that project back in tax credits to the investors, so it costs us, you know, they're, they're in and out, and it becomes ours in less than five years, and then all of the revenue becomes ours.
Question that I had was, I noticed that with the rental parking, how come this is all under one envelope? Can you do the same solar parking with the, where the rental cars are as well?
We could. I just hadn't looked to go over to that side because we had such a, the capacity that we'll be generating, we want to sell at a high premium, and we could always do that over there. I just hadn't included it. I just did that one area, because we could do an employee parking as well. The benefit is, is we have covered parking, so our snow removal in the winter and damage to vehicles with snow plows and cars getting stuck from the, the ice that forms behind their bumper when they plow the snow up under it, all that goes away. We can also put advertising underneath, I don't want to get off track here, but there's tremendous revenue that can come in, and we'll put the electric car charging stations in at this time and things like that.
Okay, because the, the funding for the parking with the rental is going to be planned and budgeted for this coming year, or, so I'm, I'm just wondering if we might reconsider tying it into the solar and the private partner, private-public partnership before we put that hundred forty-five thousand into it.
They don't pay for the park, the paving. That, we have to put our infrastructure in first, then they lease the parking lot that's already been improved. So we have to improve the parking asphalt and the design of it, the layout and everything, and then they lease that land from us to put it in, so it wouldn't save it.
Before the budget, we'll hopefully have it figured out so we know who we're going with and... so we know who we're going with and revise accordingly.
All right. Now, I'm a little confused. When you're doing, when you're repaving, I'm assuming that's the time you make the decision is whether you're going to put solar panels above that paving or not.
Well, I think partially to touch on Councilman Holloway's comment is who we're going with as well. We'll have it narrowed down in that process.
The design is being done by Delta. Delta's doing the design. They're our in-house resident engineers and they're doing the design. So the infrastructure that they put in is being worked right now based on the three companies that we've interviewed that are interested in leasing the land. I can have them add the parking lot, the other two parking lots in there.
Okay, all right. I just thought that in both instances, we're talking about resurfacing the parking areas. And the, I thought that the public-private partnership was revolved around the solar energy, solar system and not the actual parking fees, correct?
The public pri. On the solar, John, the public-private is actually.
Solar?
Solar and the projected meter credit, if you will, from the solar would pay for all of the airport's electricity usage. The parking lot resurfacing itself is separate from the installation of solar. It's separate from the installation of the self-parking. So they're really three different projects, but it has to be coordinated so that they all come together at essentially the same time.
FAA and MAA will not pay for parking lots.
So that's our dime essentially. I think your question originally was, should we consider solar over the rental car parking lot? I thought that's the question you were asking.
Yes.
Yeah. And I can't answer that because I don't know how much additional solar revenue we would derive from doing that. What we find is the rental car companies have locations inside Salisbury as well, so they're shuttling around a lot of cars. So, and that's a separate issue to take a look at is in terms of, you know, where is the car actually rented and then where is the car paid for? Because if the car's rented at the airport and picked up on South Salisbury Boulevard, who's getting that revenue? So that's a whole.
It's another concessions.
Process that we have to go through and look at.
Well, the only differentiating thing that I can, I can see is that on the rental car construction, design and study, it's under PEGO for $145,000 and yet for the regular parking lot, it's all under public-private partnership. So I was just saying, what keeps us from combining both?
No, actually, this, it is not. This is one that we were going to note that it, we're looking for funding for it, but it's going to likely be under PEGO.
Right, and that is what it is. Right, I understand. But I was saying, why, why couldn't we do the same thing from the side parking lots we're doing for the main parking lot?
No, the main parking lot is PEGO. It, we don't, we, the investor doesn't pay for the infrastructure underneath. We do. And it didn't get, this is the one that we talked about today, that it was left to be, to determine the $285,000.
Right.
That's really likely going to be a PEGO. I'm looking for funding sources, but I'm not finding FAA and MAA.
Yeah, John's question is the funding source and we will, we will look for funding sources other than PEGO, but we will have to zero in on that by the time we submit the annual operating budget so that if it is PEGO, that we embed that in the airport's budget for 2020 as PEGO. Understand your question.
Yeah, because we're approving the CIP.
Correct.
That says to be determined.
Right.
And from the, from the description above, it sounds to me like the to be determined.
May well be PEGO.
No, I was thinking it was the public-private partnership and that's why it wasn't, I'm not, I'm confused as to why you just don't put it into PEGO and then maybe tell us later that, hey, guess what?
It was an omission.
Public-private partnership, okay.
We're trying to figure out why.
We can make that change if you'd like.
It was an omission.
But it's a planning document. Remember that, you know, essentially this is a planning document and the hard numbers in terms of what the county general fund is going to support really comes in the next step, which is, well, and the borrowing as well, the next two steps being the annual budget and then the proposed bond sale in the fall. So I understand your question, okay.
Okay, the taxiway Alpha and air carrier apron. This was funded by the FAA in September 2018, just a few months ago. We didn't know we were going to get it. It was in our ACIP with them. But it, until the FAA approved their budget at the end of the year, last minute, we didn't know it got funded. So we put in our 5% into this budget cycle to pay for that. So they're doing the design right now and that will be a rehab on the air carrier apron to take care of some drainage issues, some cracking that's going on filling and then taxiway Alpha will be refurbished as well and rehabilitated. That's an FAA, MAA three-way split, kind of 95 and 5%. The next one is the airport. We tore down the three T-hangers to put in our new corporate facility and jet maintenance center. That's being done under public-private partnership, but at the same time, we have, when that project comes in, when the water is, construction starts, that's, that project will start. The ramp area and the building site area, we have never cleaned up and gotten it ready for our builders. So what I'll likely do is put that in my operating budget just as a maintenance on the ramp and site prep. But that whole project is funded under public-private partnership. Air carrier terminal renovation, it is proposed in the ACIP with the FAA and for MAA to be done in 2021. The design and then the, the extension and rehab project would be done in 2022. I've just put this in as, as that it's coming down the pike for those years. The next project is the FEMA air carrier cargo ramp. Most of this is already being funded under the master plan because we have a design. The design part of that is being done. The $100,000 is to design the actual building, not the ramp and staging all that area that goes with the taxi lanes and stuff. So this is with a joint use for FEMA. FEMA's already designated us as a staging area now that we would like to get them to designate us as a distribution center. That distribution center is a perfect building to co-utilize freight forwarders to still sort and do things. FedEx is building is, they're outgrowing their existing building right now, so they're a good candidate. I have meetings set up with them to talk about them moving into the new facility instead of expanding that one because there's a lot of problems with expanding their ramp. So hopefully we'll have them as a tenant firm before, before we know when we build. So that's all in the future and we just need to do the planning part now. The next one is the rehab taxiway Fox Trot and Alpha Apron. I meant to bring our map. They're over by Purdue, the old taxiway that used to go to the end of runway 523 at the five end, had never been reconnected, if you will, when they took out the old runway that was a third crosswind runway there. That's going back in. I put in in October 2018. I did reestablish that as a priority project with FAA under supplemental discretionary and again, just like the snow removal, we'll know probably February whether they're funding that. That will give us another general aviation ramp because we're going to need more space. It'll give us a place to put corporate hangars over there as well. The last one is the roof design for Piedmont between their hangars. Several years ago, the county funded redesign of that. It wasn't sufficient. It still leaks like a sieve over there. It was just a poor design. So we've put in design at $13,000 and then probably 140 construction is what we're guessing from what local architect that's working out at the airport has just kind of given us a rough look. Somehow we've got to fix those leaks. That's, they've got offices in there, so.
Issue there is that we have two peaked roofs that join and create a valley. And, you know, the freeze-thaw cycle, you know, just keeps breaking up that valley. So in some fashion, we've got to engineer a solution where, you know, we don't have this collector, you know, this drainage area, if you will. So we don't have any quick response, but we know it's got to be re-engineered because it'll continue to leak if we don't.
On the design study and planning, do we have like one company that, I guess it'll be an RFP on that?
Yes, sir.
Would we be, would we do the RFPs whereas that particular company would do all of these different plans? Maybe a company that specifically addresses airport.
Each of the projects are different and so they go out on a separate RFP. So the design on the hangar repair and modification redesign would be one company that the redoing the old terminal building, that RFP would be separate, likely more of an architectural company. So it just depends on the project.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
A lot of work.
Yes.
Thanks, John.
It's a good year coming ahead. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the capital improvement plan for Public Works. Mr. Baker? How are you, sir?
Doing well. I'm good today.
You're doing great, thank you.
Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works for the county. On the same format that.
That'd be, that'd be great. That would be great. Thanks.
So starting with the engineering section, we have three projects. The first is the funding for the Chesapeake Bay whip projects. As you know, we have whip goals that we have to meet for reducing nitrogen and phosphorus from our watersheds into the local rivers. We have $200,000 in there for that. We have the airport water main extension. This is really more of a, just a carryover from the previous years with the loan grant that we're getting from the state to extend that water main. We also have a new project, which is the Lakomaca River dredging support. In the previous years, dredging has been kind of sometimes covered by solid waste, sometimes covered with funds from roads. And we're trying to break that out to accurately reflect the costs of dredging and support of that, those activities for the river by providing their own CIP item. It includes items such as wetland studies and site placement, location studies as well as construction and real estate acquisition for supporting the Army Corps with dredging. Moving on to the, to the roads department, the first three are augmentations of projects that have shown up in the CIP previously. The first one being the Bear Swamp Bridge. It says a replacement. It's actually a removal. We're replacing that with.
You really need something on Bear Swamp Bridge. I was through there Christmas Day.
Yeah.
And some of those potholes?
Yeah.
Yeah, we received the concerns and we'll be out there very shortly getting those things.
Need a grader out there for a day or two.
Yeah, yeah. The dirt roads this time of year always just, they take a beating. So, but yeah. No, no, you're fine. You're fine. We're replacing that bridge with some culverts. What we found is some of the cost estimates in previous year's CIPs weren't accurately reflecting the prices we're getting. They were seeing that we're coming in bids. So again, this just augments or increases that amount from what was in the previous CIP. Same thing with the equipment storage shed and the dry storage shed out there to the roads facility. They were in previous year's CIP and the bids that have been coming back have been a little bit higher than what we anticipated.
What was that for?
The dry storage shed and the equipment storage shed. Next one is the Hobbs Road pipe crossing at Beaver Dam Creek. This is, it's over by the Bridges House. There's several large pipes under Hobbs Road that need to get replaced. Where the idea is to do a design build on these with a, with a pipe lining. Due to the size of the pipes that are there and the volume of traffic that uses Hobbs Road, our thought is that we could slip line the pipes and still leave the road open during this process. So again, we're going to go with a design build on that.
Hey, Dallas, when you, when you put those bigger pipes in, does that, what's that do to then further downstream where it crosses the next or goes underneath the next road? You know, does that then become problematic, you know, further?
That's a state move.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Or send it to the state room?
And typically, you've got to go in and take a look at the hydraulics of what happens downstream. It's especially critical if you're, if you're having, if there's a dam downstream or something like that. But again, you know, if we're going in and slip lining the pipes, that's the primary goal. We are going to look at a potential emergency overflow pipe adding in there. We've had instances where that, that road does go underwater. So we would place another pipe higher upstream. But yeah, we will have to look at the hydraulics of it.
The problem with, the biggest problem with that particular crossing is stuff that comes from upstream that comes down and plugs those pipes.
Exactly.
So a higher pipe will help alleviate that problem. And I don't know what you do about what's being washed down because there's, you know, a lot of swamp up there and stuff's broken loose, trees.
A lot of things like that, so.
I do notice that the road from where it's been fixed before is starting to sink some too, so.
Yep. Do you want me over the out-year projects or just this year projects? There's a couple projects listed on here.
Well, I mean, I had a question about Westside, the Westside Collector.
Yes.
That's an out-year project.
Correct.
I mean, I don't, you know, have the other ones, but I would like to, you know, because I've been getting questions about that, especially with, you know, Nanticoke Road being out. And when the rains happen, you know, to wash that Nanticoke Road, Pemberton Drive was also out. So people are saying, look, if the Westside Collector was completed, at least, you know, there'd be more road network into that area to help when some of these washouts occur. So, you know, I see it's being pushed off by another couple of years because of drainage concerns and whatnot. But the longer it's pushed off, the more people are using Levin de Shiel Road, you know, to go to the Westside Collector and Levin de Shiel's a mess. Now, every time it rains, Levin de Shiel's flooded even a small rain. So, I mean, I understand, you know, needing to incorporate the drainage concerns, but the fact that with that road not being completed is really causing some transportation delays that is really exacerbating some of the problems that the rains have already caused there in that, in that area. So for what that's worth.
Can we get a sometime list of the road paving projects?
Yeah, they've, they've been putting that online and yet Dallas can send a link when they complete it.
Yeah. Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
Usually after winter, they reexamine because depending on freeze-thaw, what was a priority may not be as much of a priority compared to another road like Bear Swamp.
Next project is the Colburn, Colburn Mill Pond Dam. We have, MDE is requiring us to armor the downstream embankment of that pond dam. It's very similar to what's being done at Morris Mill. Where Morris has a little bit more extensive work. We have to replace the pipes under the road and the downfall structure. In the case of Colburn Mill, that project, the pipes are in good shape. We have an downfall structure that's in good shape, so we just have to go in and armor that downstream embankment so that if water ever did come across the top of the dam, we wouldn't have soil erosion to start eating its way back through the dam. We also have drainage improvements to, on to the twin tree, twin tree road area. That road also experiences flooding in that road, so we're looking to go in and see what we can do. A small branch that runs through there that's heavily vegetated and we need to go in and keep that area cleared out and make sure it's draining the roads adequately. Moving into solid waste, which is also an enterprise fund, we have emergency generators for at the landfill. There are a series of regulated devices out at the landfill such as the Leachate pumps, such as gas monitoring that we need to have a continuous supply of power for. Currently, a lot of those, those items. of power for. Currently, a lot of those, those items do not have emergency backup. So when the power goes out, the liquid level on top of the liner can rise. And we need to make sure we keep that under control because it is regulated, or yeah, regulated by the state. We also have the replace landfill scale house replacement. That's currently under design. Initial construction cost estimates are higher than the funds we have available. So this is another one that's, it appeared in previous year's CIP and we're just augmenting those funds to cover what it still says we're going to need when the project goes out to bid for construction. And again, the, the repeated projects to improve the convenience centers and recycling centers, putting in lights, cameras, fencing at the convenience centers has dramatically decreased the amount of illegal dumping we've seen. We're trying to make sure to keep those sites maintained and reduce the nuisance that a lot of people view them as, which will hopefully help us to open up more centers throughout. A lot of times when we're looking for new locations for recycling centers, the big concern is how they look and how they appear. And this has really helped us out over these last couple of years. And then the last one is the Cell 7 construction. We're currently building Cell 9. The landfill has 10 cells associated with it. We have six of them are, have either been used and filled up or in use. We're building Cell 9. They don't, the numbers don't match sequentially. You don't build them in order. But we're building Cell 9 now. And with the amount of time it takes to construct a cell and with the amount of rain we've been getting lately, it's been increasing the construction time. We felt it prudent to start planning for the next cell construction now so that we don't get ourselves backed up against the wall in a few years when we're ready for Cell 7.
I know, you know, what's taken place in the past couple of weeks, you didn't have time, capital in here on the Conley Mill project. Anything that gets done to that, where will the funding come from that?
That, I believe, would be hyper and out of operating expenses, out of the budget process.
You're talking about possibly doing fencing or start digging, hiring?
Yeah, yeah. It happened after we pulled this together. I think in terms of public works budget, the, I mean, again, we want to consider what's the best options if we, if we are not bidding it out to say a private trucking company. We could get started faster that way.
Well, I was talking more about the fencing.
Oh, the fencing. Yeah, yeah.
You know, the capital.
The, the security. Yeah.
Could get self-funded.
I mean, we're talking, we're talking about security for these, for these convenience centers and stuff.
Sure, sure. Yeah, no, that's, that's a good question. Departmental capital. We wouldn't typically put fencing necessarily in, in this type of budget. While it's included, like, these are major upgrades to these convenience centers, like, like a new house, new, what do they ride up on?
Yeah, yeah. Then there'll typically be new docks, new ramps, new retaining walls. The concrete pads that the, that the dumpsters sit on usually have to go in and be completely reconstructed because over the years, they've just-
So departmental should be handled in solid waste.
Question I had, Dallas, is in your references to Riverside Drive and also more importantly, I see references to Twin Tree.
Mm-hmm.
That appears to me to be an extension of what we probably have been discussing over the last year or two as an overall county plan to address stormwater management, especially the Twin Tree. And I'm wondering how we've decided in this CIP to put 200,000 in the Twin, Twin Tree project when we know that where, where I don't think we've established yet the priorities of where the funding for the county should really be going. We just spent $30,000 for a study of the Pratt Road area. How do we know that that isn't going to be a higher priority? Or, you know, we've received more recent emails reference to K Wood Drive. How do we know that's not going to be a higher priority than Twin Tree? No, no disrespect to that community.
Understood.
But I'm just curious as to how we're, you know, defining the priorities if we don't have that plan back based on the 35,000 we spent on the study.
And, and, and that's a good point. And that might be something we need to look at as far as where are, are the priority areas for, do we need a storm drain improvement master plan to, to say, okay, where do we want to start spending our money first? It's a, you, you want to start working everywhere, but you just got to start picking locations based off of either number of calls that we've been receiving or, or input politically from, from folks as far as-
What's input, what's input politically mean?
Well, if you, if you guys tell me fix Pratt Road, I go fix Pratt Road. Yeah, so it's a-
How about executive?
Yeah. I'll say one, one difference is like with Twin Tree, we need permitting, but it's generally ready to, we need state permits to do it, but we're generally ready to go. The Pratt Road solutions, most of them require easements that Dallas will need to work on and prioritize. K Wood is under-
That's what I mean. But the total picture, the total package on, okay, what's, you know, what's easy to accomplish first based on what's a higher priority first?
Yeah, I think what we've tried to do, John, is we've tried to, to, we know that we've got certain hotspots. We know that we can move on those hotspots while the overall plan is being developed. And we're saying, we know we have to address these. Let's go ahead and address these. When the master plan is finalized, there may be higher priorities. We haven't engineered those yet. We don't know what to do there. Doesn't mean that we shouldn't move ahead with those projects that we can move ahead with to alleviate known problems. So I, I mean, your point's well taken, but we're just trying to, as I think one of the candidates for county executive said, you know, when there's, you know, when there's flooding, you just go out and fix it. So we're just going out to fix it.
Well, the, the only reason I ask is because, you know, if anybody, of course, it's a public document, anybody sees the document and says, so what are you doing spending $200,000 on Twin Tree?
Yeah.
Who do you know on Twin Tree Road? Whereas opposed to, you know, we've got, you know, we, it's already been established that there's huge problems here. And you make a very good point. Sometimes you have to get, I wouldn't call it the low hanging fruit, but the easier, the jobs we know we can accomplish right away, get it done.
Correct.
Not giving up on the other ones or not, you know, losing, not giving up on our commitment to the other project. But I think that needs to be really clear.
And that's balancing we have to do. You've got to keep moving on both.
And I think there has to be a plan that establishes that, that the public sees and says, oh, okay, just like we do the roads.
Right.
Why are we doing this? Wait, why are we putting this carved in as opposed to this one?
Yeah. And I'll tell you too, there's oftentimes, there's a challenge in trying to prioritize because projects that, you know, if, if we took a snapshot now, you know, going back to those, the meetings we had in March, and we pinpointed on this map where all of our, our hotspots are, we can go in and address those. That's not to say another hotspot doesn't show up in the process because some tree falls across a branch and starts clogging something up and flooding somebody else, or a pipe collapses, you know. So it's, it's a little bit of a moving target because at any point, where are the drainage problems can shift. Also depends on where the storms are coming through. In, in the storm we saw back from the remnants of, of Michael, we didn't experience a whole lot of flooding on the north side of the county. It was all on the south side, you know, from 50 below. So if we had a meeting then, where are the hotspots? Well, it's on the south side. Well, it, it depends on the tracks of these storms. So we, we keep a, a record of the folks that are calling in. We go out and try to address what are, what's causing that flooding internally. You know, our internal staff goes out and takes a look to, to figure that out. And the, you know, the so-called low hanging fruit is usually when the problem happens within public right of way or you have easy access to it. If I can get a grader all next to a ditch and clean that thing out, that's going to, we're going to be hitting that as opposed to some branch that goes off through woods and five or six acres and out into a field and then through somebody else's culvert, it becomes a bit of a challenge.
So when we meet in February, I think that's where we've moved you to the agenda, February?
Second meeting.
Okay, so that strategic plan that you'll be, I'm assuming you're showing us in February will reflect this, I hope?
No, what, what I'll be showing you in February is mostly what's related to, to the K Wood study and the places that we've been addressing here as far as cleaning out ditches and things like that. No, the, the master plan is, that's something I just literally just thought of while we're sitting here that you brought up. I mean, it's something that we can try to start developing. But no, I won't have an update on, on a master plan in February.
Okay, because I mean, again, we'll be discussing in February, we're discussing Pratt, we're discussing K Wood, and yet we'll be doing work somewhere else. So there's a disconnect there.
Understood.
Maybe the following quarter, we give you time to put a strategic plan together. And, you know, the last thing we want to do is micromanage your, your office, but it just is, it just begs the question as to how are we defining those priorities? And is there, is there a list that everyone can follow so we're all on the same page and we can explain to some people why the county's trying to work over here and not, not over here?
When Bill mentioned, you know, creating a problem further downstream when you fixed one, what is the procedure? I know we were at Walston Switch Road where the, where it was overflowing and the tax ditch kind of ends there or just up from there. So what is the procedure? I know tax ditch associations, a lot of times have somebody they call a viewer that goes out and surveys the ditch. Do we have anybody that, that does that when we, when we do get an initial problem that goes and looks downstream to see what the problem is, or goes upstream and sees what the problem is? How, how do you handle that? Is it just on a case by case basis? Or do you do it, I mean, is there any way that we do it, you know, as a prevented maintenance problem?
No, we, we do not do any preventative maintenance. It is, it is a reactionary process. People will call in with an issue and, you know, it can either be our, our stormwater inspector, it could be Lee, it could be myself, it could be somebody from the engineering staff that goes out and, and looks to see what the issue is, whether something's been down, clogging the branch, whether we've got beavers, whether it's a pipe that's collapsed, just, just to try to figure out why that something's flooding the way it is. So.
Bill?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Wayne, as a refresher, the capital improvement program is a five-year planning document. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then what they see in fiscal year 20 is what will carry over to the capital budget that they'll see for fiscal year 20.
Yeah, the, 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 the first year, this is called a capital improvement plan and capital budget. So the plan is for five years. The proposed budget is for the first year for 2020. Now that, between now and when we submit the budget, that may change because we may find that we don't have the revenue to support this or that we have other priorities that pop up in the meantime. But today or when we submitted this, what we see in the first year is what we believe we're going to propose in the annual operating budget.
And one other question. If there's grant funding mentioned for any project and for some reason that grant funding doesn't come through, what happens to the project?
It, it depends on, it depends on why the grant funding doesn't come through. If the, if the grant agency were to say, we don't have the money this year, but we may have the money next year, or they may say, we could probably fund that to a level of 50% this year and defer 50% to next year. So we have to react that, to that, you know, in time and come back and talk to council about, okay, this, this funding scenario has changed and this is what it looks like now.
Okay.
I guess Anderson Mill would be an example of that. Where are we with that? What was that project?
As far as the repaving of it or what do we, which, which set? There's, there's multiple facets to Anderson Mills, just to make sure.
But this was a drainage project.
Okay.
From last year.
Yeah, that's the one where we went in and replaced the pipes that had clogged up when the, when the boat had gotten jammed in the outfall pipe, damaged the pipe. We took the boat out. We went back in after a few months and replaced the, the pipes because that, that damage to the pipe joint was causing the, the road to start to sink in. So we replaced those. We've cleaned up the downstream and the upstream side. I want to get that road repaved here shortly. In fact, we're calling up our, we just, we just recently, last month, got the paving contractor back on board, our, our new paving contractor on board. So they'll be out there here shortly finishing that pavement up. That dam itself is unique in that it's privately owned on the upstream side. The county owns the right of way on the road. And then there's a private owner on the downstream side. So when MDE sends out their dam inspection letters, it goes to three different folks. And they will put maintenance efforts on their dam inspection reports that don't always involve the county. They'll say, hey, you got to clean up within 15 feet of the toe of the slope of the dam, but we don't own past the toe of the slope of the dam. So that ends up falling on, on private, private property owners.
They may or not have the funding for it. So it, it gets, it gets complicated.
But as it is right now, problem solved.
Yeah, as it is right now, I mean, the pipes have been replaced. It's flowing. We have an emergency overflow pipe in there now. Yeah, it's, I mean, as far as the drainage goes, it's in great shape.
Well, just have to remember back, was it 2007, Bill, when we were on the council the first time? We were replacing people's wells because it was too dry. We were looking for funding. Remember?
I wasn't here yet. But I know we went through a drought cycle. A lot of wells went dry.
Next year, we'll, we'll be talking about.
I would love it if we weren't talking about rain.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dallas, do you anticipate, hey, Dallas, do you anticipate that the work we're doing in Nanticoke Road will impact the downstream?
Yes, so that's interesting. They have, they, the state have asked us about the improvements to be made, that we made downstream. So if we can get you that information, the state has to model whatever improvements they make upstream on the impact of what will happen at Anderson Mill Pond.
Hang on a second. Sorry. Kind of reconvene for a second.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. No, no, no.
We thought we were done.
I was asking about what they're doing in Nanticoke Road, how that might affect downstream with Anderson.
Yeah, so it actually relates back to your question, Councilman. The, what, what happens is the state has to, if they may want to make their pipe bigger under Nanticoke, they have to do a model that shows how that will impact Anderson Mill Pond. Now, when the, several years ago, when they did a model, they showed that Anderson Mill Pond was over topping at a storm event that just wasn't happening. I think they said it was over topping during the 25-year storm. And we knew from experience that wasn't the case because up until this last May, when that boat got clogged in the pipe, Anderson Mill Pond had never over topped. So we had disagreed with their initial report and they had to go back and revise it. I've not seen their report of any improvements that they're making. I, I know they have asked us what improvements we made. And we have to get them that information so that they can include that in their study. But, but again, I've, I've not seen, they, one, yes, they do have to model it, but I've not seen the, the results of that model yet.
Thanks.
That's all right.
Thanks, Dallas.
Thank you. Containing motion is adjourned. Second, all in favor.